Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. We will call your name, then please give your neighborhood for the record, and you will receive three minutes. Our first speaker is Aikuhana Halmaukina.
Our first speaker.
Greetings of peace. I am here. Greetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Aikuhana Halmaukina, the Grand Inca of the Airflock Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. We will continue to be present and to speak our peace onto the record, as it is our constitutional secured right to do so, as displayed in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution, that, I quote, "in excluding Indians not taxed," end quotes. According to John Baudrillard's Constitutional Dictionary, we are the Aborigines of America. I urge you to go verify those pieces of information, those pieces of legislation that exist, that set the precedent as to who we are and how we are to be treated. And at the time of 1856, the definition of tax meant not to be burdened, not to be censured, and not to be handled. And that is why we continue to make our plea known to city council, as you are the governing body of your municipality. And we are being accosted. Our property, our land, is being taken without our consent, and according to the 1787 Northwest Ordinance, that goes against an agreement that you all swore an oath to. So when we proactively come on this line and have these conversations with members of city council, some conversations yet to be had, we've reached out to Bobby Wilson and his staff, and have yet to hear back from him to confirm a date. And there are others that we have not reached out to, and there are others who have spoken to us, scheduled meetings, and then for certain reasons, they did not take place. So we urge you to have these conversations with us. So as we go to and from and about our land, that we are not assumed and assimilated into a system that we do not belong. It is time for respect. It is time to reclaim our land. And it is time for the people, the citizens, the constituents, the governing bodies, local, federal, and state, to honor the Aboriginal American people in our land. We will not go away. Our voices will continue to be heard. There are lots of us, such as myself, who has been hurt by your municipalities, your officers. I bear scars. As the snow is starting to fall outside of my window right now, my body is baking due to a gunshot wound I sustained as an innocent.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kotakibe. Is Kotakibe with us this morning? If not, our next speaker is Shamon Pohmain.
Okay, Alaka'een. Greetings, everyone. And to be clear, we are not to be assumed to be Native Americans, who are Title 25 Indians under the Constitution and not the Aborigines of this land, as they are the descendants of the Koryak people, the Russians, the Mongolians, and of British descent, as it clearly outlines, clearly defines, they are these people in Title 25. So we are not to be misconstrued as some immigrants under the classification of Native Americans, as they are continued to be considered citizens, and we are not that. Whereas since the formation of the United States Congress has recognized our sovereign status through the exercise of powers reserved to federal government in the Commerce Clause of the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. Whereas many treaties were entered, and a treaty in particular, the Delaware, September 17, 1788, Congress assumed the trust responsibility and obligation to our people, our nation. Whereas this trust responsibility calls for Congress and all of the governing bodies underneath Congress, which is to include city council of the city of Pittsburgh and Pennsylvania, to have an utmost good faith in dealing with our people, as provided in the Northwest Ordinance of 1787. Whereas this judicial system of the United States has constantly and consistently recognized and reaffirmed our special relationship, our government-to-government relationship, that you are also bound by city council. When you do not act in respect of the constitutional oath that you have sworn, you are clearly sending a signal that you agree with forced assimilation, which is against the Constitution, as well as many other bodies of laws, treaties, and international laws as well. And you're also saying that you agree with the genocide that has been waged upon our people before you step foot on our lands. For you are very new to this land, and we are very ancient people, since time immemorial. We go back further than the Olmecs, but let's start there. And then let's talk about the Mayans. None of you have this lineage. You are all considered immigrants. You must behave and respect us in the manner that the Constitution, it clearly defines that you are to do so. So we will have some legislation that we will be presenting to you. We are tired. I have had my automobile stolen. I have been taxed, which is against the Constitution, and everyone of you are responsible for righting the wrongs that your police officers are committing on our people, a people who have been good to your people, all of you, upon our lands. We are demanding, we are not asking, we are demanding respect.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Haley Presley. Is Haley Presley with us this morning? Not seeing the name, that does exhaust our list of registered speakers. We'll now move on to our Standing Committee agenda, and would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. [inaudible].
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have a number of deferred papers, which we'll take in bunches, but the first one is 866. 886, excuse me.
Bill 866.
Yeah.
Or its amendment and supplement in the city code at Title 2, Fiscal Article 1, Administration, Chapter 219, Operating Budget, Five-Year Plan in Order to Temporarily Decrease the Minimum Fund Balance Requirements in Response to the Fiscal Pressures Imposed Upon the City by the COVID Virus.
Need a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill was recommended. Next, Madam Clerk, if we could take bills 878, 879, and 880 altogether, these were the bills that were amended at our line item vote on Monday for the operating positions and the capital budget.
Will do. Bill 878, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public's Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1st, 2021. Bill 879, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2021 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation Thereof, and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated. Bill 880, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CBG Program in the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to make a few comments about the line items that I amended, tried to amend yesterday that didn't get a second. So I wrote a letter that went along to the leadership of council and members of the administration last Friday, when they did not recommend it as part of the administration's amendments, that were the bulk of the amendments that we voted on last week, and to say that I don't think it's really even necessary, and maybe time to reconsider this ad hoc way of vetting line items that we've been doing for the last couple of years since the end of Act 47. And so those few positions, right, a handful of positions that were to replace empty positions in PLI. We all heard the budget hearing where I asked the PLI Director about those positions. She was told she wasn't allowed to fill those positions in the middle of this year. It's not that those positions are unnecessary. They weren't unfilled because they're unnecessary, and there isn't work to do. Similarly, I could say the same thing about city planning. I tried to replace positions that we'd lost last year, and then they lost further positions this year, again, because they had been unfilled in 2020, but they need to be filled in order to do the work of the city. And then I very clearly heard from Director Chapman at Parks and Rec that they were doing a tremendous job, a really laudable, important job at distributing meals, and I commend the administration and Parks and Rec specifically for doing that. They had very creatively found partners, donations of food, and through different kinds of bureaucratic partnerships with the county, with the school district, and that they distributed 250,000 meals. I think we can do more. And he very clearly said that it was really just a limit of people, power of staffing. And those positions especially are very affordable positions. They're seasonal entry positions that I proposed to replace. And yes, to keep this budget to the penny balanced, which again, we're not access, we're not under the same restrictions as Act 47 and ICA, when this council was not allowed to have even a penny of change, I took the exact same dollar amounts out of our very over-budgeted police budget, as you've seen me now say several times. Out of Act 47, we decreased all of our city departments, possibly too much, right? And it's been 15, 20 years, and some of those departments have not increased. They are still in austerity. Our citizens are only getting austerity-level services out of those departments, and yet the police budget has fully recovered, and is very robustly budgeted. So much so, I think that this budget is out of whack that way. And I've heard members say that we can't do it. I'm reading a different act at the state that says, sure, the police chief can't fire people, but we're not the police chief. We can adjust, we have budgetary power, and we can reduce that budget. And what happens is that not the most junior people get let go. Nine and a half, or 10, of officers out of the 243 who are fully ready to retire today would be the first to go. No one would be let go. No one would be, they would be let go. They would be ready for, they would be retired with full pension. And I don't think that causes undue hardship. Well, it's always hard to lose some people. There are too many people in that department. And this is the body that makes those decisions. And so I just wanted to be able to say that on air, and I appreciate the time, that I think we're going to regret cutting these other departments the way we have. And, and I, I directly asked the mayor to explain in his own words, we all heard the same thing. I, I understand his, his directive. He told every director to eliminate empty positions, and I'm saying I disagree with that decision. So I appreciate your time. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Gross for her explanation and her thinking, because I think, as I alluded to the other day, we've been doing a lot of talking past each other and not really actually talking and understanding what one another is thinking, and what those who are even public commentators are really thinking. And I look forward to that dialogue. And because of that, while I might, while I might disagree with what Councilwoman Gross's proposal was, because I too, I don't want to lay off people this year, I would rather cut vacant positions for six months and then reassess than, you know, lay off even people who are up for retirement or pension. It's just a difference in opinion. I do agree that we could reassess the process for next year. I do agree that having a different process that allows for non-leadership positions in council to understand what amendments might be coming, or might be floated out there ahead of time, would be very beneficial for all of us to have a robust conversation about it. So I'll just say, I do agree that that is something we can work towards next year, if others are, if others are amenable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from any other member?
I have something to say.
To Council President Smith.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to make it clear that I also think that we should have looked at the process, but I do want to point out that this process was a process that we put in place, that we voted with, when Councilwoman Rudy at the time worked with Bill Urbannick, and they came to us and met with us and had briefings about this process. So back then, I had concerns, but we voted for it in the Women's Caucus and endorsed it. So I just want to make sure that people understand that this wasn't something that just came about this year, or just came about through an administration. It was actually put into place. And I also want to say that although I hear Councilwoman Gross's concerns, I also want to say that we've also talked a lot about how building police community relationships are so important, and that would be the first place the Police Bureau would cut. And I, I don't think that we can afford that, especially right now at this time. But I also want to say that I love how everybody's always mentioning retirement first, as if there's no such thing as age discrimination, and that's the first people were ready to push out the door. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion?
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
So, thank Councilwoman Gross for her explanation. If we could cut the police, I would have done so 10 years ago. I'd have done so 11 years ago. I would have done so eight years ago. I would have done so seven years ago. I would have done so six years ago. I would have done so five years ago. I would have done so four years ago. I would have done so three years ago. I would have done so two years ago. If we could cut the police budget and get rid of fire, I mean, police officers, I would have done this over and over and over again. So let's be honest, and I've been, I've been very clear about this, and I have, I have had briefings with the law department to make sure. I have looked at state law. This is not arguable. We cannot, we are prohibited. The state legislature, in fact, in the 50s, put in place a law specifically banning us from firing officers except for financial reasons. We cannot fire them. We cannot. We can't write them out of the budget. We are prohibited. If we do so, they will simply appeal and get put right back in with further costs to the city. And so to try to do something that's going to cost us something, because it seems to sound right, I think, is either misinformed or irresponsible. And I, I don't think, you know, your intentions are bad, but I think this action is absolutely bad. Second of all, I think, if we are going to cut the police budget, it should not be, we should think about putting money more into services, into things to uplift specifically and disproportionately African-American communities. The defund the police movement is not a movement by putting resources so that the majority of the community, that majority, community, majority communities can benefit. It's not the whole point of it. The whole point of it is to provide social services because minority communities that have felt the impact of overpolicing prosper. And so this is the wrong time. This was the wrong time for this idea, and I think it's a little unfortunate. I'll use this to use that word. It's an unfortunate conversation to have. But I want to make it very clear. I've said this over and over and over and over again, and I guess I'm just old. I'm not, I'm not always right. I just try to be right and do research. It doesn't mean me always right. I'm wrong sometimes. This time, I'm not. The only way, the only way, the single only way to reduce the number of police right now. Now, if we don't get money from the federal government, and we go and have less income that we verify our budget, we will be able to lay off officers then, in June. But right now, the single and only way to reduce the number of police officers is by attrition, by not hiring new officers, exactly what Councilman Lovell and I have done. Is the only way to do it, is the responsible way, is the nondiscriminatory way, and I suggest that we should do that over the next couple of years. Over the next couple of years, let's not hire, let's not bring new classes on, let's not hire new officers. Let the, let the older officers retire with dignity at their own pace, and then we will have right side the police. We also would have done that in a way that would not cause, hopefully, lack of safety, because we, at the same time, we will have been further investing in the community. And so that's what I think, I do understand, you know, that these, the last thing is this, we can get volunteers to deliver food. I've been doing food for, my wife and I have done food for the last, Jesus, 25, 30 years. I've done food bank. I've done, I don't talk about it. We've done dinners and high rises. I've been doing food in Homewood for at least 30 years, my wife and I personally. And so if you want to do, you know, we want to deliver food, we don't need more bodies to do it. We can do it volunteers, if that's what you want to do. Last, but not least, this isn't council's role. Council's role is not to tell directors positions they need. Our role is not to tell the administration, and let's just be, this is, let's just talk about how silly this is actually. It's silly, because actually, the mayor wouldn't hire them. Even if we put them in the budget, he wouldn't hire them. So we could put them in the budget. You don't have to hire them. This is not council's role. It is not council's role, because it's not something we can do. We can't make him hire these people. So we would fire officers to put positions the director said they don't need, that the mayor won't hire. Let me explain what this would actually do. We would have laid off officers for people that the mayor would not hire, and the directors have said they don't need. For what reason? So I don't, I just, I think, you know, so you can go now, I mean, we, we all kind of know this, what this was really about, to say that, you know, you somehow tried to defund the police. I understand that you needed to say that. God bless you. You said it now. But let's not do this. Let's not, this issue of defunding the police and the condition of African-Americans in this country is an issue we should not be using for this, this amount. I certainly won't say anything about it, but it bothers me deeply that when we, we know, it's often, there was a, in the 50s and 60s, what they used to do, 40s and 50s, what they would do is white singers, black people would record, would have these songs and sing these songs, and then white artists would come, steal their music, record their songs, and make profit on it. That's kind of what they did for years, for years. This is what this feels like to me. The fund the police is something that is supposed to be geared to helping African-Americans. And it sounds a little bit like that, we're taking that song to help African-Americans, we're kind of twisting it, use it for our own benefit to make some political point. I said this earlier, let's not do this. I will not allow this to be done this way without talking about it. This issue of the condition of African-Americans in the city, racism is a public health crisis, the outcomes of African-Americans are to die, this is not something to play with. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other members? Still on first round? Any other members for first round? Seeing none, second round, Councilwoman Gross.
That was a very big speech about very many topics. I'll just say some facts. There are 975 police officers, as per our quarterly report that you should have in your email. My budget amendments eliminated nine and a half in order to fund positions that are needed in other departments that are still in austerity budgets. That's, if you take it out of off, the number of officers, it's about 1%. It's less than 1%. It's less than 1%. So that was a very big speech about a whole lot of things that aren't really relevant to my budget proposal. And I think we should have, and I won't motion for it today, but I think maybe we need to have a post agenda before discussing these policy disputes that keep going around and around and around on this council. We are not the police chief. We're not firing officers. We are a body that usually some members defend the powers of, and in this situation seem to be wanting to diminish the powers of. We have budgetary powers. And I don't, I will just say for the record here, that yes, I've read Act 111 in the state law, and perhaps we need a post agenda about why that's relevant or not relevant to a city council. And I think it would be good for all of us to have the same understanding, instead of just having the same circular argument in our sessions. And, and then lastly, I resent the implication that only the police department serves black communities, and the funding of any other city department is a disservice to black communities. And that's another really important discussion I think we should have at another time. There were lots of things to unpack in that very long speech about very many topics, and I look forward to pursuing any one of them.
Thank you. Any other members for, for discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Bill is positively recommended. We have one in opposition, Councilwoman Gross. Next, if we can read our purchasing bills together, which are bills 881, 882, 883. 881 allows business to continue and bills to be paid in '21. 882 allows the use of cooperative contracts by our, by the city, and 883 allows for the interdepartmental process to align with the JDE system, and for that to continue.
Bill 881, Resolution Providing for the Letting of Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments in Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing, Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Servicing of City Buildings and Facilities, and for Any Miscellaneous Services in and for any City Departments, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof for the 2021 Fiscal Year. Bill 882, Resolution Authorizing the City to Participate in Applicable Corporateed Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supplies, Services, materials, equipment, supplies, services, professional services or construction as authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Bill number eight eighty-three, resolution authorizing city council to approve intra-departmental transfers throughout the twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bills are recommended. Next, if we could please read bills eight eighty-four, eight eighty-five, eight eighty-six and eight eighty-seven. Um, these are our tax bills. And there is no tax increase for the record.
Bill eight eighty-four, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at title to fiscal article nine, property taxes, chapter two sixty-three. Real property tax and exemption, section two sixty-three oh one, levy and rate on lands and buildings by fixing the rate of taxation for twenty twenty-one. Bill eight eighty-five, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at title to fiscal article nine, property taxes, chapter two sixty-three. Real property tax and exemption, section two sixty-three oh two. Payment options, discount and delinquency penalties. So as to set the payment discount and delinquent dates for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Bill eight eighty-six, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at title to fiscal article seven, business related taxes, chapter two forty-five. Earned income tax, section two forty-five oh three. Declaration and payment of tax at subsection B. So as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year twenty twenty-one. Bill number eight eighty-seven, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at title to fiscal article seven, business related taxes, chapter two forty-six. Home rule tax, section two forty-six oh three. Declaration and payment of tax and subsection D. So as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills are recommended. Next, let's take bill eight eighty-eight. This is our, uh, fee book. These are fees.
Bill eight eighty-eight, resolution authorizing the fee schedule for twenty twenty-one pursuant to chapter one seventy of the city code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Abstain. Abstain, Teresa Smith.
One abstention. Thank you.
Uh, may I, Mr. Chair, may I? Council President Smith, do you have some concerns about the rates that are set?
I just want to have a chance to review them and I haven't.
Okay, let, let you and I talk later then, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, uh, one abstention, bill is positively recommended. Uh, that takes us to our new papers, bill nine sixty-one.
Bill nine sixty-one, resolution amending resolution one eighty-one of twenty twenty, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to enter into mini grant reimbursement agreements for the twenty twenty, Love Your Block program in order to add financial account information for projects completed in twenty twenty as well as projects that were postponed due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. At a total cost not to exceed fifty-one thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and two cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine sixty-two.
Bill nine sixty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with M G T Consulting Group for the purpose of providing support services for the preparation of the annual indirect cost allocation reports in accordance with Federal Office of Management and Budget Circular A seventy, A seven. Total cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for three years and thirty-four thousand dollars for the two additional option years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Excuse me. That takes us to bill nine sixty-two?
Nine sixty-three.
Nine sixty-three.
Bill nine sixty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with Clark Field to Service Bond Council for the purpose of rendering any and all necessary opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total cost do not exceed one hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars over a three-year period, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. With two one-year options to extend the contract for a total of two, two hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And shall be paid using proceeds from the debt issuance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine sixty-four.
Bill nine sixty-four, resolution designated banks and lending institutions to act as depositories for the year twenty twenty-one in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code title to fiscal article three, depositories.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I just want to thank the controller, um, for his work on this. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, and I just want to thank his office for all, for all the due diligence that he's been putting into this effort. Um, oh, sorry, Councilwoman Gross.
I just want to say, um, usually we have an exchange with the finance director explaining this a little bit, which is fine. We're not in, in chambers. Uh, but each year we talk about how they do such good work trying to keep deposits at local banks, but with really great guidelines um, to make sure that they're protecting, um, the citizens, you know, the treasury and the treasury, our, our city treasury and the deposits that we have. Um, and it also kind of builds up the strength of, of local banking in some way. And that's, um, I think for the benefit of the city. So I really appreciate that work as well.
To that point, Councilwoman, what I will also just say is in our conversation, we did have a a conversation about how we can do even better at attracting some of the smaller banks, um, that have, that some of the reporting requirements can be challenging for them as well as what can potentially be done to even get some of our credit unions participating in this. And so hopefully in this coming year, we'll have a more robust conversation about how to do even better with this. But, um, they have been doing a good job and so I want to thank them as well as our new finance director, uh, Mr. Anderson, who was in the controllers and now on this side of the conversation.
I appreciate that. Thank you for letting me know. I think that's really exciting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Uh, bill nine sixty-five.
Bill nine sixty-five, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Leach, Tishman, Fiscado and La Paul for legal services in connection with an employment-related matter for an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve brief discussion.
Second.
Um, generally these matters go into executive session. I'm just curious as to why this wasn't requested for executive session. Unless it's just the expediency of being at year's end. Um, so, um, I don't know what this is for. I'm going to abstain for today until I can speak to law. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other members for discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention.
Thank you.
The bill is recommended. Thank you. That exhaust, that committee takes us to our invoices. We do have invoices for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That takes us to P cards for approval. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cars are approved. Uh, that takes us to the Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. Um, two supplemental papers, the first being bill nine ninety-five.
Bill nine ninety-five, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of human animal rescue in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars for animal care and detention services provided for the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine ninety-six.
Bill nine ninety-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety enter into a license agreement between the city and Plaza and Grandview Owners Association at a cost not to exceed one hundred and four thou, one hundred and four thousand and four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. New papers, bill nine sixty-six.
Bill nine sixty-six, resolution authorizing the Department of Public Safety offices special events to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon to provide management services for the Richard S. Calligere's City of Pittsburgh Great Race for a term of three years at a total cost in management fees not to exceed annually the greater of sixty thousand dollars or forty percent of net revenues generated by the Great Race. And further authorizing for appropriation pursuant to the aforementioned agreements, uh, certain sponsorship revenues for payment of management fees and operational expenses of the Great Race.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine sixty-seven.
Bill nine sixty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement with Re-Engine Consulting Services related to the con, conduct of a detailed analysis of the Bureau of Police and a redesign of business processes with the objective of more closely aligning processes with best practices of law enforcement and with new technology in the Bureau for a sum, for a sum not to exceed one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
Uh, motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, um, first supplemental paper, bill nine eighty-three.
Bill nine eighty-three, resolution further amending resolution three thirty-five of twenty nineteen amended previously by resolution five sixteen of twenty twenty. Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to supplement a professional services agreement with consultant Eileen Papali as a sole source to provide professional support services to staff of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at a new cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars in increase of fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Council President Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to point out that this is one of the positions that retired and we found that we needed the institutional knowledge and that's why it's back. So sometimes we talk about pushing people out the door. Sometimes we have to invite them back in and cost us more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to point out, uh, you know, Eileen Papow is worth every penny just for her knowledge and what she brings to the table and they were having a hard time functioning without her, actually. She lives in my district. What she does beyond her work for us is incredible. So, um, I just wanted to say I fully endorse Eileen and, um, I'm glad that she came back and is helping us out. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Uh, bill nine eighty-four.
Bill nine eighty-four, resolution providing for an agreement with Zatola Construction for construction services associated with the Allegheny Circle Phase Two construction project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed two million six hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. I, I just want to say I'm really excited about this, um, this project coming through. This is the Allegheny Center. Um, you know, converting the, the Ring Road into a two-way, uh, road. Uh, very similar to what was done in, in the East End. And I just want to highlight this because, um, you know, it's great to see how we're turning some of our streets that were like no man's land back into a neighborhood street. And specifically this one, because this is where my grandparents had their first house. Um, and then Allegheny Center Mall came in and the whole development there. And, uh, really, you know, took away a large part of the neighborhood and this is where that, you know, that marketplace that I talk about, that's, that's, uh, was so grand, uh, was, was removed as well. So I feel like we're righting some of the wrongs here and I think it's, uh, I think it's much needed. So thanks for the time.
Thank you. Any further question? Councilman Coghill?
Oh, I just wanted to add, Bobby, I never could figure out how they constructed around Allegheny Center. I kept away from it because it was just bad. It just seemed like a bad design for years and years. So you're saying they're kind of turning that back into a street and, you know, neighborhood like again.
Yeah, right now, I, I mean, they've been slowly, you know, incrementally like putting in some of the design elements that, uh, you know, throughout the whole planning process that's, that's been done. Uh, but, you know, the ultimate goal was to take it from the four lane one-way uh, back into, you know, something that looks like a neighborhood street. And, um, you know, a street that's going to work for everyone. But yeah, uh, right now there's different little islands that exist there that keep people going one way and they're going to do a whole, um, renovation of, of the street. And I mean, you know, there was some concern about, uh, you know, outside, you know, and I realize you're on the, the S E A and, you know, there was concern about, uh, fans getting home. Uh, they can get on the highway sooner. So, you know, that, that was more like a parking lot, uh, for them to wait uh, to get on the highway at a, at a different time. So really takes, takes, uh, you know, some users out of our neighborhoods and and lets people use the space more appropriately.
I love it. Good recognition on your part and it brings a sense of community back. It seems to, to some degree, I hope it will. And maybe I'll even venture over your way, okay, and check it out.
Yeah, well, if I could add, I mean, there, this is a process that, you know, the Buell Foundation was a big part of, uh, they really organized to, there, there were so many people that, you know, I, I get the pleasure of, of, you know, sitting here and talking about, you know, how this is, you know, being done. I'm, you know, I'm proud of this, but there are so many people that came before me that, that really put the work in. The Buell Foundation, the Northside Leadership Conference. Um, the, all the local communities, Allegheny, Allegheny School. Um, uh, you know, all the entities there. I mean, this is, you know, where there's also a technology hub there now. Uh, new place. So there's so many entities that really took part in this conversation. Um, so, you know, it's great to see the Buell really orchestrate that and to make sure that every, every voice is heard. Um, so this is a process that's been going on for years and it's nice to see it come to fruition.
Bobby, I'm glad that Diana Bunko is under mine. I'm trying to get her into the South Hills, but I know they do great things on the North Side. So, uh, you know, I will pass on your compliments to her, um, from you, okay? But yeah, so that's all good stuff. Just wanted to, you know.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to bill nine fifty-two.
Bill nine fifty-two, resolution authorizing the city through the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure enter into an agreement with Bakery Square Two Office Holding Parcel for the purposes of granting a perpetual exclusive easement solely for the purpose of installing and maintaining signal equipment on the properties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine fifty-three.
Bill nine fifty-three, resolution authorizing the city through the mayor and director of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with Lord P P A, PKS Q three parcel B. For the purposes of granting a perpetual exclusive easement solely for the purpose of installing and maintaining signal equipment on the properties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended, Bill nine fifty-four.
Bill nine fifty-four, resolution authorizing the city through the mayor and director of the Department of Finance and Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with CSX Transportation and to execute those documents and deeds to effectuate that agreement in the form approved by the city solicitor to take steps to improve and make safer the South Side Riverfront Trail, including one, exchange of property approximately point twenty-nine acres for the purposes of trail use and of enhancing safe trail use and in lieu of condemnation imminent domain and two, closing and vacating the South Ninth Street Road crossing over the CSX tracks.
Motion to approve, uh, brief discussion.
Yes, second, brief discussion, please.
I defer to you, Councilman.
Thanks, uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, who's here, please, excuse me to speak on this, if anyone? Hi, Director, how are you? Just, you know, I don't want to get in the weeds here, but, you know, can you just give me the, uh, the, you know, the dirty version?
Uh, the quick version is this is not quick, uh, this is a process that has been ongoing, uh, beginning with our dear friend, uh, Pat Hassett, um, so this has been in the works for probably five years now, um, which is just resolving, there, there were some, uh, track crossing, um, agreements, uh, with regard to South Ninth Street, that was a, a legal, uh, track crossing that CSX, uh, wished to be closed for the purposes of safe operation of their, um, network there, um, over a very long period of time, uh, we were able to negotiate um, an agreement that, uh, served the purposes of maintaining that, that, uh, trail and installing some, um, barrier fencing, um, along it so that we can protect trail users or users, um, from the, uh, from the adjacent rail line.
So, we did this at Fourth Street, if I recall, a few years back and we kind of got beat up a little bit about it. Uh, that people liked being able to get access to the trail by simply crossing over the tracks and perhaps not using a more defined point of entry. So, um, uh, I, I'm not looking to obstruct in any way uh, and to expedite the meeting, can you and I just do a phone call later today and, um, so I have a better understanding of just exactly what we're, we're looking to do here and, um, uh, I want to make sure that people understand the reasoning behind why we're choosing to do this and, uh, that it's not punitive in some way, but it, it really is around ensuring safety.
Yes, and, and it does provide a quality trail, sure, let's talk later.
Thank you, thanks, Director, appreciate your help.
Thank you, any further discussion?
I just have a quick question, um, when you talk about twenty-nine acres there, Director Ricks, that's in length, say s- six feet, ten feet wide, is that how we determine acreage?
It's point two-nine acres.
Yeah, it's point two-nine.
Yeah, uh, I wish we had twenty-nine acres of riverfront property.
You gotta say, we can put a farm there.
Yeah.
Okay, good enough, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill nine fifty-five.
Bill nine fifty-five, resolution vacating a portion of Wickliffe Street, a fifty-foot right-of-way laid out in the HM Bison Plan of Lots, recorded in Plan Book Volume eleven, page sixty-four in the tenth ward, seventh council district.
Motion to hold for three weeks.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, bill will be held three weeks, Bill nine fifty-six.
Bill nine fifty-six, resolution granting unto Alpha Four L D their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintaining use of their own cost and expense to install a new projecting sign at one twenty-five South Beatty Street in the eighth ward, ninth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Bill is recommended, Bill nine fifty-seven.
Bill nine fifty-seven, resolution granting unto Northside Properties Residence to LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintaining use of their own cost and expense to reconstruct a set of existing entry steps at eighteen ten through eighteen sixteen A Street in the twenty-fifth ward, sixth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, that takes us to Land Use and Economic Development, chaired by Councilman Wilson, first bill, Bill nine seventy.
Bill nine seventy, resolution providing for an agreement and contracts with HRNA Advisors to assist the city to plan and develop a housing needs assessment. The housing needs assessment is both an update to the twenty-fifteen housing needs assessment and a COVID-nineteen impact analysis, which can and will identify and examine current and future housing needs potentials as the city embarks on its first ever citywide plan forging PGH payment at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
That good?
Uh, yes, I, I wanted to, um, I have Director, uh, Dash on the line, um, hi Director, uh, good morning, I wanted to, I know, we had a great conversation about this the other day and, uh, I just wanted to follow up on that conversation. So, um, you know, I think it's, you know, so important that we, um, you know, continually to monitor the, you know, uh, the data of what's happening in our city and, yeah, uh, you talked about how this was, um, you know, the, this housing study is recommended by the task force previously and it came out with four, um, four goals in mind and, and try to meet those goals and this was one of them. Um, a, a major question I had was just, what is the, um, like, what is the, you know, some actual physical things that we could see come from this, uh, and then the second question was, um, are we, I realize this is, you know, the pandemic and we're definitely concerned, um, you know, we see people struggling and we need, uh, to understand that fully so that we can implement strategies to help them. But I want to ask, when there is not a pandemic in place, I mean, what, uh, are we on a timeline for how often we should, we should, uh, revisit this? Study?
Uh, thanks, Captain, good morning, um, as Councilman LeVell is fully aware, um, you know, the, the Affordable Housing Task Force, uh, you know, when it came out in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, did the housing needs, you know, DCP did the housing needs assessment, um, that had outlined, uh, you know, kind of the much, uh, repeated, you know, kind of gap of twenty thousand uh, affordable housing units, um, now that we're five years later, uh, now that we've gone through, um, you know, crisis of, you know, of, uh, the pandemic and the economic, you know, kind of impacts that have associated with that, um, wanted to be able to update that information, uh, and, and do this housing needs assessment. As a part of that, it will affect, this is something that, you know, the, the Department of City Planning wanted to do, uh, relative to making sure that we are, have a, an accurate picture of housing in Pittsburgh as we go to update and make permanent things like inclusionary zoning across the city, as we go to update things like our pilot accessory dwelling unit ordinance, uh, which we initiated in Garfield. At the same time, uh, we were talking to, uh, the URA who wanted to be able to see this information updated to affect things like, um, you know, the direction that they go with things like the Housing Opportunity Fund and, and other, uh, funding sources that they, that, that, that they have. And then, uh, the Housing Authority was also very interested in updating this information relative to, to their programs, uh, because, you know, all of us are, you know, have various pieces, uh, the city around development regulations and, you know, the redevelopment authority, Housing Authority more in direct funding, uh, you know, to affordable housing and we wanted to make sure that we, you know, had an accurate present picture of the city of Pittsburgh and its housing needs, um, so that we can work on making sure that the initiatives that we have are ones, uh, that are, you know, are, are meeting, you know, are trying to meet the need of Pittsburghers.
Great. And I was just, the, this second question was, um, just about the timeline, is there a regularly scheduled, like every four years, we should revisit this, or?
Um, not, not particularly, uh, there's not, there's not a, there's not a set timeline, um, but, you know, just given, um, you know, both the effects of the pandemic and, you know, I'd say that there have been, you know, definitely changes in the housing market over the last five years, uh, especially with, uh, the amount of new construction that we've seen, which although may not, you know, may not be great for a lot of other cities is, is pretty, you know, it, for, for Pittsburgh, um, you know, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of housing growth and a lot of new, we have permits for new housing. Um, we were seeing that costs for housing are increasing and therefore, um, you know, there is, you know, we want to make sure that we understand what the demand is, is there for affordable housing and what the demand is for, for housing types that we may not be accommodating, uh, in the city.
Okay. Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you, any other members, Councilwoman Gross?
Director Dash, thank you, um, I, I'm glad that you mentioned that we've had so much new construction in some places and not in others, it's a constant conversation at council here. Um, and that there's been a lot of change since the completion of the last report, certainly. So, um, did you mention or did I miss like how, um, quickly you'll be able to complete this next one? Because the last one was a, was a big conversation and rightfully took a long time. But if we want to kind of study and then respond, what is the timeline that you're shooting for?
Uh, so we'll be doing this work through twenty twenty-one, um, assuming, uh, it, it is, it is related to forging PGH to the comprehensive planning work that we're doing, so they will, you know, so our contract, uh, that we're asking council for authorization for, um, will update the housing needs assessment, it all, it, it will also work with, um, you know, we will be bringing back, uh, many of the members from the Affordable Housing Task Force, uh, together to talk about, uh, housing policy relative to land use. And so, you know, so the, the needs assessment will be one deliverable that will come out of this contract, um, then, uh, other policies that will, that will come citywide, um, will come out, um, so we do, we, we anticipate that the, the process for this will be probably, you know, through the first half of twenty twenty-one, uh, that they'll be, uh, completing this work and that we would then have policy recommendations that we'd be, we would be reviewing with, you know, with city council and with others.
And could you just very briefly, I, you know, I don't want to believe in this because it's obviously something that we'll all be talking about a lot for the next year. Um, give us a snapshot of the, the, I know you've talked about it before with forging PGH, the, the citizen input capacities that you're adding.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I mean, as far as, uh, the comprehensive plan and in this, the relation of this work to the comprehensive plan, um, we will be, you know, we, we did have our first round of public engagement, uh, that closed and, you know, it was through the month, months of September, October and November. Um, you know, we, um, you know, have, have taken that right now and are working to, uh, to develop some potential scenarios for the public and, you know, looking to probably have our next round of public engagement in the March and, March or April timeframe. Uh, you know, and, and that will, you know, give, you know, give Pittsburgh residents, uh, a chance to, to weigh in on, you know, a couple of different scenarios and, and ways that the city could grow and really talk about, you know, what direction they want to see the good city go in, in the future. And then, and then after that, it's, it's up to us to really, uh, to work with, you know, bodies like city council to develop the policies to, to be able to make that vision, uh, come to life.
And since we don't, I don't want to extend this, this meetings, we have lots of other opportunities to talk about the land use plan, the comprehensive plan, which is wonderful thing to be working on, I'm just going to say, but you don't need to respond, um, that I think council will be interested to see where you are getting input because different citizens participate and are more a- able to access, to accessibly participate with certain types of outreach mediums, right, and we, we are in a global pandemic and we are kind of, and basically, you know, stay-at-home orders off and on throughout this session and we have different technology, um, accessibilities in different households, so let's not talk about it today, but let's, I think this council will want to keep its eyes on whether we feel like we're getting robust citizen participation, but I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just say, uh, welcome, Director Dash, I'll just say that, um, I know that after the last task force report came out, there was a tremendous amount of pushback from people who, from some people, not all people, who, um, seem to disagree with the, the number that was, um, that was landed upon, um, as far as the affordable housing gap that we have in the city, the number of units, um, that we actually need to build or need to convert to, to truly affordable in some way or another. Um, they, you know, had various reasons for pushing back against that number and thinking that it was inflated in some way, so guess, again, I don't want to get into necessarily the details of it now, but I'm really hopeful that whatever future report does come out, whatever update does come out, and I assume that it will be larger than the seventeen thousand unit number from last time, um, has really airtight um, arguments to, to back it up, to back up where we got that, that number, so that we can truly come together, agree that we need to address that number and then move forward on a plan to address it.
Yeah, and I think that was when we were going through the consultant selection process, I think that's a place where HRNA really, you know, I mean, there's, their strength is in doing this work and they've done this work and I've been doing this work in other lar- you know, large or larger jurisdictions in Pittsburgh, um, you know, have, have a, you know, we, we felt, uh, strong methodology down, uh, to do this work and then obviously we'll be working with, uh, you know, kind of a reconstituted Affordable Housing Task Force, uh, to, to be able to have people that are working in all sectors of housing, uh, to be able to check that work as it's being developed.
Thank you, I'm sure of council, you were done, Councilwoman.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, any other members? If not, I do have a question and you don't even necessarily have to answer it right now, Andrew, but you've heard this conversation, um, previously where a lot of what we've been talking about is the level of affordable housing within our city, right? But, part of what we haven't necessarily been talking about, or at least in parts of my district anyway, is what is the appropriate balance of market rate housing to affordable housing to subsidize housing in any one neighborhood, right? Um, and you've heard this as we're looking to go through the updating of the master plan process in the Hill where people are clamoring and saying, hey, we need to protect our affordable housing and we need more affordable housing. At the same time, we're trying to rebuild a business district, at the same time, we lost a grocery store because of lack of disposable income in part. Um, and so the conversation of what is the appropriate balance for our city? What is the appropriate balance for the Hill or for Lawrenceville or for East Liberty or wherever you may be? Will we have an opportunity through this needs assessment to have that conversation?
Less through the needs assessment and more through the other work that HRNA will be doing as a part of this contract. Um, so, you know, the intention is that in connection with the comprehensive plan that they will be, um, you know, doing policy recommendations for us, uh, around housing based on the needs assessment and based on, um, you know, the, the work that's, you know, both the work that's gone on in here, here in Pittsburgh and the input that we receive through the process. Um, so, so, so I think it will start to define those things a little bit and, you know, again, and then, you know, then when we're doing things like, uh, the neighborhood plans or the work to update the Hill District Master Plan, you know, as an example, then in cases like that, we, we can have those kind of guideposts around housing at the citywide scale that then the neighborhood and the residents in the neighborhood, when they're going through these neighborhood plan processes, can really start to define where, where that happens and what that looks like, uh, you know, what, you know, like if, if they know that a balance of, you know, affordable housing, you know, to market rate housing is, is, is somewhere in a range, uh, you know, starting to think about how that takes shape in their community is something that they would define through the neighborhood plan.
Okay, thank you, um. I, I have a whole lot of other thoughts and, and conversations, but we can, we can take it offline and I'm, and I look forward to working with you on it, um, so thank you. Any last, uh, conversations from members, Councilman Cogkill? You're on mute, Councilman.
Okay, sorry about that, Andrew, thanks for being here, uh, I just want to take the opportunity when we talk about affordable housing to bring light to anybody who's going to be working on this project in the future, I feel is an ideal place. It's in Carrick, it's called Berg Place. It's, I don't know how many units, but, you know, a good number of units. It's, I don't know how many units, but you know, a good number of units there. I think it's in the right neighborhood where we need affordable housing. And I just want to put it on your radar as I do with you, you know, anybody who wants to listen, this piece of property is goal of mine to get redeveloped in my next term. And, um, you know, I want people looking at it now and conversation to start now. We do have some legal technicalities to get through. I think, uh, the law department is working on that. But, you know, I want people to aggressively pursue this. And if it's us, it would be great for, for affordable housing. If not that, a developer, you name it. But when we're talking about affordable housing and to get into the South Hills, this is an ideal spot for us to focus on. So and if you want, if you know anything about it, if you want to reply, please.
No, I mean, I'm familiar with, familiar with the development and kind of the challenges that it's had, uh, with, um, you know, you know, with conditions, uh, with conditions that development for, and, and otherwise, um, no, I think you make a good point and just making sure that we think about, uh, sites like that as we're, as, as we're working through these plans.
Yep. Okay. Good enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to bill, I think in my place, 971.
Bill 971, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 425 of 2019, Usifying the Consultant Team Selected to Assist the City in Development Plans and Studies to Support the Development of an Oakland Neighborhood Plan and Updating the Operating Budget Year and Account Number.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Um, Bill 972.
Bill 972, Resolution Providing for an Agreement and Contract with BJH Advisors LLC to assist the city to develop a comprehensive market demand and economic opportunity analysis with the Department of City Planning. The analysis will provide a review of national, regional and local employment trends, opportunities and market factors in employment forecast and inventory of billable employment land and result in demand for employment land through 2040 and identification of land use strategies and workforce development needs to focus on equitable economic development, ensuring alignment with forging PGH, the city's comprehensive planning effort and provide for the payment of the cost not to exceed $105,000.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Director Dash? Not sure if we lost them.
I am still here.
Okay. Great. All right. Great. Um, so I wanted to follow up on this one as well. If you could brief us on, on this one and, and, uh, what this means.
Sure.
This is 972.
Yeah. Uh, sorry. I, I just had to, uh, go hunt down a charger for my computer. That was all. So, uh, yeah, so this bill is, um, somewhat similar to the, the bill that we, that we just discussed around housing. Um, it's doing some similar work relative to economic dev, uh, economic development. Um, this is in, uh, conjunction with, uh, the comprehensive planning effort, um, is looking to do more of an employment analysis and, you know, kind of understanding of economic development across the city. Is something that we'll be doing, uh, in partnership with, uh, the Urban redevelopment authority, Allegheny County Economic Development and others. And what we ultimately will see through this work is, um, it will look at economic development. It will look at, you know, kind of what Pittsburgh sees, you know, in, into the future as kind of, you know, I mean, some of these things, I think we have a good idea of, but, um, you know, as far as where the city's growing and what industries the city's growing in, but then start to connect that better to land use. So that we know, all right, well, if, you know, if there are certain aspects of the tech economy, for example, that, you know, we're seeing growing, what are the buildings that they need? What are the types of buildings that they need? What are the spaces that they need as they, as they scale up so that, you know, that idea that happens in a lab at CMU as that spins off into its own company, you know, and, and so on, so forth, that we're able to keep the, you know, to keep those, you know, those businesses here in Pittsburgh and that we're creating the opportunity for those businesses to be able to stay in Pittsburgh. And then complimentary to that is, you know, that they will be developing strategies with us, um, to start to think about, all right, well, what are the skills that we need to be able to get residents into, into those jobs? And what are the complimentary workforce things that we need to do? Because one of the things that when the city did the conditions and trends report, when it released, when the mayor did the press release for the comprehensive plan, uh, was that there is a skills gap between the jobs that we see here in Pittsburgh and the jobs that our residents have. And that, you know, when we need to be able to close the skills gap to be able to make more of these jobs available and, you know, and make those be, become opportunities for our residents. Um, where, where in some cases they're, they're not, they're not right now.
Okay. Um, well, thank you for that. I've been thinking about this. Now, uh, have we worked with this? This contractor before BJH Advisors?
Uh, we have, we have not. Uh, we did go through a consultant selection process. Uh, they've done similar work, I believe, uh, in Staten Island and Brooklyn. They're a New York based firm. Uh, also did some work in Montgomery County, Maryland. Um, that's very similar. Um, and, you know, talked a lot to us, you know, about the opportunity, you know, their work and especially their work around how that they've been able to use zoning and land development, land use regulations, uh, to, to be able to go, you know, to do the things that their analysis outlines. And, you know, so we're really excited for the opportunity to, um, you know, to be able to create a better zoning to, uh, you know, to accommodate, um, you know, the, you know, where we see the strengths of Pittsburgh in the future.
So we, we have, um, have we had this analysis done in the past in the city, uh, within the past 10 years?
Uh, no, we have not.
Okay. Um, I see the word, um, equitable in here, and I think you're speaking to that about, you know, putting in, uh, or trying to understand, uh, how we implement, um, training. I might have heard you incorrectly, but, uh, it seems like there's a few pieces to this. One is, how we're going to, you know, with, there may be some development regulation changes that, that come about from this, but then also, you know, recommendations of how we should, uh, plan to get people more well-trained to be in these, you know, to work for these, for these companies. So, you know, to that, uh, to those discussion points, you know, one, one point that people continue to make about the city of Pittsburgh is, you know, how, like how, as we move forward and develop and move towards, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of, um, new, new, uh, I'm not sure if it's mid-sized business, large business, how you would freight, uh, how you would coin it, but you know, as we move forward with the tech companies that come in, you know, how do we think about our previous bill, which was to, uh, do the analysis for the, you know, for the, for the housing needs? And so, you know, can you speak to that? How like these two, uh, bills would like play on each other?
Sure. The, the economic analysis, uh, you know, and the, the economic development analysis is going to, to work with the, you know, the housing needs, uh, assessment as we get through the comprehensive planning effort. And then we start to position, you know, where there are new areas for economic development, where there are new places for jobs, where we see jobs, uh, you know, either continuing or expanding into the future. And obviously thinking about housing opportunities, um, you know, near there, uh, thinking about the connection of those things with, with transit and mobility, um, you know, we, obviously as, as we, as we set things forward on the equitable piece, uh, you know, it definitely does relate to that skills gap. It also relates to, um, you know, the work over things like, uh, the avenues of hope program, uh, where, you know, thinking about what economic development looks like in, you know, in, uh, commercial corridors, uh, like those and how those continue to change. Um, obviously, um, you know, there have been a lot of changes to our retail districts, uh, due to the pandemic and changes there. So, you know, similarly to the housing needs assessment, we will be, you know, this, this work will kind of look at kind of short-term COVID response and what that looks like, and then look further into the future at a 10 and 20 year scale. You know, to, to be able to create, um, you know, a list of recommendations as to what the city should be doing.
Thanks for your time today. I really wanted, maybe other members have questions, but I just wanted to say that, um, I wanted to just take the time today to walk through some of these because although this is, you know, they're each a hundred thousand, uh, dollars, it's, um, you know, this is what, uh, you know, is like our, our guiding path to, and, you know, provides recommendations on how we spend millions of dollars. So I wanted to just, uh, take a moment to talk about this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, I have a question. How are we, Director? How are we tying this in or are we tying this in to the schools?
I think that'll be something that we think about, you know, with, with the analysis and which, and with some of the interviews that go into the analysis. Um, you know, as we start to dig into, um, you know, that issue of the skills gap, as we start to issue, you know, dig into the issue of, I mean, we have a lot of strong workforce partners that already exist here in, you know, here in, here in the city, uh, you know, partner for work, uh, others, you know, the, you know, workforce investment board, lots of, you know, lots of people doing a lot of work in the space. Um, so we're not trying to duplicate that work, but I think, you know, a, as we, as we dig into the numbers a little bit more, I, you know, I think we, we very well, you know, could start to identify, um, some places where we need to, to have some conversations. You know, after that, to be able to, to start to work on, you know, where, where the skills gaps specifically are and, you know, what opportunities um, are identified to start to work on that.
Okay. Um, to the extent that I can be helpful in any way, bridging any level of gap between the school district and the city, I'm more than willing to. I do think there needs to be a robust conversation of how we're educating our children and what we're educating them to actually do versus the jobs that are actually out there. Um, I think there's sometimes a very, a real, very real disconnect between what we're preparing our children for versus the jobs that are actually going to be there in the next 10, 15 years and the skill sets that we actually need people to perform now. And just along the lines of not necessarily duplicating the work, it also may be worthwhile reaching out to organizations like the Forbes Fund, who I know is also doing a lot of tracking of the, the jobs who were recruiting to come into the region, how long they actually stay in the region after we've recruited and spent tons of hundreds of thousands of dollars to get them here. So they would just, I think, be another worthwhile resource for you.
Thank you, Councilman. You definitely take you up on, on that, on the suggestions.
Thank you. Any last comments from members? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Thank you for your time, Director Dash. Next, we have Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Schlossberger. Number of supplemental papers, Bill 993.
Bill 993, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into An Agreement With Legal Edge Software For Licensing And Professional Services Related To Maintenance And Support Of The Department Of Law's Legal Case Management And Administrative Support Software System At A Cost Not To Exceed Over five years, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 999.
Bill 999, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance On Behalf Of The City To Adopt An Existing Government Contract And Enter Into Any Related Agreements With Kara Soft Technology Corporation To Provide Google Cloud Subscription Services For A Four-Year Term At An Amount Not To Exceed
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. So this, I know that not, not everyone was able to make it to our IMP budget briefing, but this fits into part of IMP's, um, five-year plan essentially to move more of our, our work to the Google cloud. And we actually were selected through a process to get, to get, um, free services, free, uh, professional services valued at about $600,000 that we won't have to pay for to help with this migration. So, um, I know it's a lot of money. It's a, it's a long-term, a longer-term contract, but, um, I wanted to just provide that context that it is part of our, you know, the department's actual five-year plan here. And I know that there are people, people here representing IMP if there are any questions about that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Can, uh, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Schlossberger just a couple of quick questions, if I may.
I will do my best or defer to IMP.
Okay. Super. So the four million is over four years paid in one lump sum, do you know, or over the four-year period?
The, the note that I have here is that this legislation provides a means to approve operational funds for 2021, 2022, 2023 and 2024. But I don't know the answer to that question. So let's bring in IMP if we have.
Sure. Thank you.
Interim Director. Or someone else here. Let's see.
Is Gwen here? That would be great, I think, right?
She was earlier.
Jennifer Olzinger from procurement. I can answer that question if you like.
Thank you. That would be great.
Yes, it is, um, annually, actually, um, the $600,000 in free professional services and the first year of this agreement are being provided to the city at no cost. The out years, uh, two, three, four, five, those will all be paid in the individual fiscal year that, that the expenses are incurred. So it'll be about 1.3 million paid each year. It is not going to be paid upfront.
Got you. Thank you. That's very helpful. And then the $600,000 in free services, that is just a one-time, um, benefit of the first year. Those, those are, services are not duplicated in years two through four as well?
Correct. These are the initial implementation services and the thing, you know, the, the professional services needed to move the things to the cloud.
Got you. Thank you very much. It was very helpful. Thank you. Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Your chair. Thank you. Um, I was going to ask the same question, Councilman Crowe. So thank you for asking it. We're, we're all very aware of cash flow right now. Um, and so Director Olzinger, if you're still on the line, kind of like, when is the first check? So it says like, you know, so it's like a million or so in, in 2021. In January or?
No, probably the end of 2021 for services for 2022.
That's also.
Possibly 2022, but the first year, they're basically giving us those cloud services for like a dollar.
That's really good news and well done. If you had a hand in the negotiating and, um, it does still look like a big sticker price, right? But I want to say also, um, I think I missed part of, um, Director Norman's presentation, but it was very impressive and we had seen part of it in other briefings. Um, and it's incredibly helpful for us to go back so we could all see it in the YouTube link, which is so handy to, so I could scroll right to that one at the IMP hearing. It was incredibly well done and very clearly communicated. And I, I just am impressed and have a lot of confidence in the direction that IMP is going. So thank you. That's all I have, your chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill, Bill is positively recommended. Bill 1000.
Please. Thank you.
Bill 1000, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 729, 2019, Which Authorizes City To Extend A Contract Or Agreement With Pittsburgh Community Television For Public Access Television Services By Extending The Term Of Agreement Until March 31st, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1001. Bill is recommended. Bill one thousand and one.
Bill one thousand and one, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City planning to enter into an agreement with Mahoka to provide a building, a building benchmarking management platform software solution for a sum not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for one year.
Motion to approve, brief, brief discussion. So I, I wanted to bring this up only because I think it's a really good, we're heading in a really positive direction here. This particular technology will allow us to help benchmark building efficiency as it'll correspond with the, the legislation we passed a couple of years ago or last year that would require some of the largest buildings in the city of Pittsburgh, even outside of, you know, city government buildings to report their energy usage and this will help us benchmark that. I guess if, if the, if the correct person, whether that's floor or whether that is, I guess floor, that's you. If you can answer whether this benchmark will be, benchmarking tool will, will be something that can evolve and grow over time to allow us to then benchmark other things that we are tracking such as the Climate Action Plan implementation or even something that could then extend outside of sustainability and resilience and benchmark other things that we'd like to have a dashboard to be able to, to see. What is, what's the capability of this? And maybe this is, you know, some of these questions are, are, are fit for you or fit for Director, Acting Director Norman, but.
And I'm happy to answer. So it, they, this platform, one of the reasons it chose it is because it's one of the most modular one. The other option on the market are very focused on benchmarking, which is also great because then it's really doing what it's doing well. But Manica is really more a modular platform. So they're being used by the Green Building Alliance for the twenty-second district benchmarking. They helped a company track their greenhouse gas emission and they're building energy efficiency and they're growing and they take a lot of feedback. So if we see a use to, to continue using it and expand its usage, we could give them recommendation and maybe they could go there. But definitely trying to, to encompass, have a dashboard that has all of the metrics to tracking is something we're working in, in SNR right now.
Okay, so possibility for expansion in the future if it goes well in one, after one year.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. That was all I had.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine sixty-eight.
Bill nine sixty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with OST Inc. For sure, short-term emergency professional IT staffing resources as needed to fulfill a number of critical IT and device-related projects for a term of up to one year at a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine sixty-nine?
Bill nine sixty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment to extend the existing intergovernmental corporation agreement between the city and the county of Allegheny for the enterprise resource planning by increasing the total amount by two hundred thousand dollars for a total not to exceed amount of eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars for continuing support of the J D Edwards ERP system.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Again.
So this legislation extends our contract for one year with the J D Edwards program so that we can buy some time to be able to make the migration away from that, which will take that year to be able to start that migration. And as we know, it's been, that we've, we've experienced troubles with this. We've experienced higher than ideal costs. Hopefully you all received an email that I sent to all of you, to all of council, or that actually, actually sent on behalf of, of, of the clerk's office to walk you through a briefing that Acting Director Norman put together on this and, and sort of planned from here. So I'm, I'm happy to open it up to, to questions as well today or to discuss at a later date or resend that briefing to you if you didn't receive it. Just wanted to provide some context.
Thank you, Councilman Cross.
Yeah, thank you. Acting Director Norman, can I ask you the obvious question? We, we've been down this road before and we have, we have extended to J D Edwards to transition and I, I just would like to have some level of reassurance. This is the last time that we'll actually need to do this.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Kraus, Heidi Norman, Acting Director for IMP. Yes, last year, you're correct. We did extend it for another year. Two mitigating factors happened over the course of twenty twenty-one. We had COVID nineteen and the second was our long-term applications administrator for JDE retired over the court, over the summer. And we have only just been able to promote someone from within to take his place. So we need, we just need a little bit more time to get that separation underway.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, First Supplemental Paper Bill nine eighty-six.
Bill nine eighty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Allegheny Clean Ways and Operation Better Block for professional services interacting with the twenty twenty pickup P G H litter and dumping cleanup initiative and providing for payment at the cost not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second, I can't resist discussion. Councilwoman, do you want to go first?
I just moved to approve it, so I did not motion to approve a discussion, but go ahead.
Okay, so we all agree budgets are ref- are reflection of our commitments, right? And I know these are not financially fluid times, but we, we, we have to do better at keeping the city clean and presentable, especially at a time when we are going to be severely challenged with inviting and encouraging and supporting the reinvention of businesses, whatever that is going to become to look like here in the next couple of years. But a city that looks like it is neglected or not cared for creates a environment that creates permission to not care for it and to disrespect it. And, you know, I beat this drum the entire time I've been here. But we, we have to do better. We must do better. We have to commit more resources and not just going out there to clean it up or to pick it up, but to educate that it can't be there in the first place and to provide succinct and deliberate opportunities for waste management in a, in a, in a responsible manner so as to change this generational thinking that if you don't know what to do with it, just throw it over a hillside and we'll find Allegheny Clean Ways or Better Block to go out and pick it up. I, I had this conversation with Bob this morning. Nothing frustrates me more than to get a call when a lot is six feet high as opposed to getting a call when a lot is six inches high. And when we can manage it on the front end, when it's much easier to manage at six inches than to go out, you know, with full force when it's six feet high. So of, of course I'm going to approve this, but I, I can't, I just can't resist saying how important it is that we have to do better and we have to commit more to, to changing the culture and the climate that somehow it is permissible to be irresponsible in managing your waste. It's the number one call we get, thirteen years here, and I can honestly say the number one call that comes into the office is someone's inability to manage their waste properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Yes, thanks.
Mr. Public Works.
I got it. Hey, you know what, Councilman Kraus, I couldn't agree with you more. You know, a big complaint for me. I have people who walk along hillsides. Of course, hillsides are where people just feel like, hey, throw it over there. You don't see it, goes over the hillside. I'll show you Pioneer Avenue. You wouldn't believe that this stuff is there. I mean, people are afraid to walk it. People like to walk the hill, but they, they don't want to walk it. They're just afraid of the disease that might come from this. So, so I am organizing an effort just for that particular hillside and we did take it upon ourselves in my office to clean up, you know, some of these areas. Some of them are overwhelming. I mean, refrigerators. And, you know, I feel like Public Works could play an important role in that in the coming years. I know I'm already in talks with Director Gable about, you know, if we can get all that stuff to the bottom of the hill, we just dispose of it like we did with the electronics and, you know, the, the, the garbage Olympics. So our Public Works are really great at it. We have some really great dump trucks that fit a lot of debris. And, you know, I want to get them more involved. So I'd love to sit down with you and talk about, you know, certain areas in your district and my district that we can target. You know, take it head-on and Public Works more involved. So that's all. I just wanted to reinforce what you were saying.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you. I just want to say that I also have been, I put in a gazillion pieces of legislation over this issue and we actually increased the anti-litter campaign under this administration. So we actually have more people and more efforts and more cameras and things that we didn't have before. And it's, and she does do some educational components with the schools, but I, I really, it's still so frustrating because you still see it everywhere. And so I just think that we need to rethink the way we're doing this. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a common, I think it's a combination of things. I think you absolutely have to do citations at some point because we have been doing the, the education, the cleanups. I think part of it is, I want to make sure I mentioned this, is that when there's illegal dumping, that we, we have, we really don't have any cases that were actually successfully, successful in court. And so I just want to make sure, I think we have to partner with our magistrates so that they understand the importance of those, those cases that we bring before them and that we have to bring those cases before them too. I just went through that part.
Yeah. So, so Mr. Chair, can I go, anybody else want first round?
Sure.
So I think it's interesting that the three members that spoke to the issue are southwest of the river and clearly united in, in the common cause that it happens a whole hell of a lot south of the, southwest of the river here and that we hear it all the time and, and that litter is a gum wrapper on the street. It is not a refrigerator dumped over a hillside. There's clear distinction made when you're seeing Freon and televisions and dehumidifiers, tires by the thousands, tires by the thousands dumped over hillsides. And especially this time of year when all the foliage is down and you can just see the enormity of, of the problem out there. That it's not, you know, it's not happening in a vacuum here. Clearly, Councilman Coghill, Council President Smith and myself are, are all too painfully aware of the cancer that this has become on the, the district southwest of the river. And we, we just need to, we need to be better. We, we need to be better. Perhaps it's not that we need to do better. We need to be better to, to have the respect to not file the nest, right? To, to respect where we live and where we call home and to make certain that, you know, you see something, you say something, you know, you speak up, you can't do that. Don't, don't put that there, you know, there. And then, of course, to provide the, the better and proper opportunities by which one can then properly dispose of, of waste. Thanks very much. Appreciate you letting me get on a soapbox for a minute.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
I just wanted to add, I think there has to also be a an effort to, to educate, I guess, you know, how you keep people from throwing garbage out their windows. I don't know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a lost cause. Maybe it's something, you know, you're, you're, you know, you're, you're taught as a child, right? My throw anything out the window is disgusting. So I'm not a big believer in signs, you know, I am a big believer in, you know, if we can catch them on camera and find them and, you know, make some sort of penalty for it and we can put that money towards cleaning it up. But, you know, signs, I think people throw the garbage out the window, they'll throw it right at the sign, you know, so. But I would love to see an effort and trying to educate. I don't know what that looks like, but, you know, just wanted to make that point. Thanks.
Councilman Laval, this is Director Gable. Can I speak to a couple of things, just to answer the Councilmen's questions?
Hi, Director. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Um, yeah, we, we certainly concur with everything you guys are saying and, and Bruce and Anthony and Teresa. It isn't just entirely in the Southwest. It really clearly is in all other areas of the city. We know that there's contractors and people coming in from outside the city knowing that there are certain areas that they can dump in. And I, so I think we.
You're absolutely right, Director. It's cancerous. It's absolutely cancerous. And it is no reflection on you, your department or your desire to see a cleaner and better city. But I, I guarantee you, Director, there's not a, a week that goes by that we don't get three or four calls in the office that some contractor from outside the city has found a tertiary street in one of the hilltops neighborhoods to just back a truck up, dump it and drive away, all done in fifteen seconds.
So we, yeah, we, we agree. We know that some of those areas are occurring and we have ramped up the, the cameras. And the, I think another big thing that's occurred, and it only recently happened, is a lot of the, a lot of the citations were being held, or I'm sorry, being heard by district justices that were not Pittsburgh. They were sitting judges from the outside boroughs and such. And now we've gotten the opportunity that making sure that the citations are being heard by Pittsburgh District Justices. So we've had a lot more success in terms of fines and stuff and we also have got more cameras out there. But there's a lot more to do. We've done, we've made strides. We've, I wouldn't say baby steps, but, you know, there's a whole lot more work to be done. We agree with you, concur. It all comes down to education, comes down to some levels of enforcement. And I, you know, Councilman Coghill referred to the Garbage Olympics. I thought that was such a great event that I actually am asking we do that a few times a year. To do that a couple of years because it was so, so successful with all the neighborhoods that, that, that worked to do that. So there's a lot of things we can do. There's a lot of things we have done, a lot of changes to improve things, but there's definitely a long way to go. We agree with you wholeheartedly.
Yeah. Hey, Director, as long as we have you here, just, just a sincere heartfelt wish for all the best as you venture into your retirement and, and to, to heart, a very heartfelt thank you for the years you've contributed to making this city a better place to be.
Thank you very much, Council. This is Councilman Coghill. I, I just wanted to add, number one, the Garbage Olympics, your crews were incredible that day. I mean, they were hustling around. They were throwing TVs and things in the dumpster before, in their dump trucks before we could put them in front of them. So they, they, I just wanted to make a point to, to note and, and in talking to you and what you had just mentioned, expanding that, I think that's a great idea. I felt like we cleaned Carrick out that day, you know, and all of Carrick that way and it felt good. There wasn't a piece of garbage on the streets. And the second thing I want to say, you know, what are you doing here? You're making me nervous. Have you looked outside yet? You know?
Beautiful. It's a good thing. Just stay home. Just stay home. Just stay home.
Stay home. That's good advice from the director. I'll tell you, so. I wanted to thank you for the work you do, you know, direct, of course, send you off properly at some point, but, um, yeah, I know you're going to be a busy man today.
I just wanted one more snow event before I left. That's all.
Got it.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, I really appreciate the discussion. And I don't want to make it a, you know, a north versus south.
Yes, I really appreciate the discussion. And I don't want to make it a, you know, a north versus south or east or anything. I think, you know, we definitely all realize that it's all across the city. But, um, you know, I just want to say that right now there's, you know, we're talking about Public Works and what they can do and what Allegheny Clean Ways can do, Operation Better Block. But, you know, really, it's it's so much more than that that we could really, you know, get a handle on and and really look at in the future and continue to fund like the land bank because right now the U R A is hiring a new manager for the land bank. And I believe that if we continually fund this entity, you know, hire, even even in the, even the finance department, hire more people to quiet titles and move and, you know, really have an understanding of maybe even target some of these properties that we know of in in different parts of our our districts. And, you know, really that that land recycling piece is going to be so key for the future of the city and, you know, how we're gonna you know, utilize these spaces where people are dumping right now. So I just wanted to, I didn't want to let let this go by without saying that, you know, although we can clean it up, there's still that issue of vacant abandoned property and how we solve those issues.
Thank you. Any any other members?
One last time, I swear.
Well, let me real quick because I got a question.
Yeah.
Hey, Director Gable. Are you, are you familiar at all with sort of the tertiary streets where people dump? Have we ever posted or put up cameras to try to catch those doing it? And the reason why I'm asking, there's an area in my district, Alpina Street that doesn't get it as much as what Anthony and Bruce are describing. However, every so often, we will discover toilets and other stuff that contractors, materials from renovated homes that have been dumped. And it's just a little, it's just literally a tiny street that's a bend. But there's only one house on that bend. And so people will dump there and then eventually we'll make calls and it'll get cleaned up. But I was thinking about seeing if there was a way to attach a camera to one of the poles there so that we could try to catch who's doing the dumping. Are you familiar with that, having ever been successful or people attempting to do that?
Yes, yes. So if you give me the, if you would be able to send me an email later on, and I will get that over to Missy Rosenfeld. She she has cameras at her disposal. I know that sometimes we have to purchase them. Sometimes we get them from other entities, but yeah, we definitely put a lot of cameras up over time, and this is, this is a good location. We'll definitely get one there.
Okay, great. And if necessary, my office would purchase it. So I'll get I'll get that information over to you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think we're on third round, Councilman Kraus.
Okay. One last thing, I promise. I don't know how to do the chat, and I wish I knew how to do it because I put this in the chat, but I'll email it out to you each of you today. If you haven't seen a documentary that Frontline has done on PBS called Plastic Wars, I strongly recommend it. And but I would do it not on a night that you need a good night's sleep because you will not believe what we have done to this planet and the production of plastics and our inability to be able to dispose of or recycle them properly. And it it's staggering in its content. And so I bring that up to say that it's a yin and a yang. It's the manufacturing of packaging as well as our inability to manage waste properly. And the pandemic has only heightened the the use and the manufacturing of a single-use or disposable product that is clogging our our landfills even further than what they already are. But I know Bob's watching, and Bob, if you would please, because I turned him on to this, if you would just send this out to members the link for this, and I'd be very curious to see what your thoughts and reactions are once you watch this. Thank you. I'm done. I promise.
I promise to. I promise to. Just real quick. I just can't help but to chime in. Councilman Kraus, you, I saw that document documentary. You couldn't be more right. And from somebody who's taken upon myself to, you know, go over hillsides and actually pick this garbage up, I would say eighty percent of it are single-use plastics, you know, the biggest the biggest offender are like those Gatorade bottles, you know, they're they're like a hard plastic. They don't crush up. The space they take up in the landfill, I know personally because, you know, in my company, they're not allowed to throw that in my dumpster because the space it takes up, just that small little bottle. We're being overrun with it. I think with all the science in the world today, can we not come up with a biodegradable product that we could put beverages in? You know, and if we do, I think that company, you know, I want to own some stock in because it is, we're being overrun with it. I just wanted to, you know, emphasize your point and tell everybody from somebody who's picked it up, it's eighty percent are those single-use plastics. Oh, that's right. So good. We're we're gonna, we're gonna have fun together, Bruce. We're gonna
I'm going to throw this out there too. I know Councilwoman Strasberg is working on some initiatives as well too, and she and I have talked recently, but I think finally businesses understanding the impact that they're having with single-use plastic and some of our our larger neighbors, business neighbors here are understanding their responsibilities in in keeping that that single-use plastic to the absolute minimum that it can be.
Well, since we're having a free-range discussion, there's there's several restaurants in my district that have gone to compostables. So you can get your takeout container not in plastic. You can get your cups not in plastics, utensils not in plastic, and I'd be happy to share their names with you. And there's certainly, you know, Pennsylvania's or single or against Pittsburghers against single-use plastics are already working on this and we're coordinating with the businesses in my district. So I'd be happy to to talk about that some other time.
Yeah, please.
We kind of get back to the agenda item and we only have two or three more bills. So I look forward to talking about that in the new year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any last comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is recommended. That takes us to Bill nine eighty-nine?
Yes, Bill nine eighty-nine resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for seven hundred Second Avenue.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
I'll just defer to the the councilman. It's just the same affordable housing project. I thought we already did that, sir module. It's seven hundred Second Avenue. So it's one five two oh nine. So I assume it's District Six.
So you'll have to pardon my ignorance.
Okay, if you want to, if you want to hold it too, I didn't have my staff research this one, so I apologize. I've been having them look up to see where they are in the permitting process, but I don't have notes in front of me on.
I'm opening file as we speak. Which one is this?
Seven hundred block of Second Avenue. I'm not sure how far up that is.
Oh, yes. Well, let's hope because I'm not exactly sure what this is. I apologize.
Two weeks, maybe?
Sure.
Okay, motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. I apologize. I should have been paying more attention. Next bill, six thirty-five?
Bill six thirty-five resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for fifteen oh one Penn Avenue.
Motion to hold for three weeks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held three weeks. Bill nine fifty-nine?
Bill nine fifty-nine resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of liquor license from Almond and Rob, Rob to the applicant Burke Yomas for the premises located at fifty-four forty Center Avenue known as Pizza Calamou pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
I'm assuming this is in District Eight, Councilwoman. But again, I didn't look up the address. I'm not sure if it's on my side of Center or your side of Center. It is. I, if I, if I may, I, it is in District Eight. I did get a note from Allison Hardin from the Office of Nighttime Economy, and I do believe it has to be held for a public hearing, though. So we can do that. I just wanted to try. Okay, yes. Absolutely. Thank you. Motion to hold for cablecast. If we still say that or however we do our public hearings, so whatever medium it is. Thank you.
Second.
Any favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for a public hearing on whatever medium that is.
Thank you.
Yep, so that exhausts our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. Due to the Christmas holiday next week, council will hold both our regular and standing committee meetings on Monday, December twenty-first at ten a.m. and one thirty m, one thirty p.m. respectively, excuse me. To register to speak at the regular meeting, please call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight before nine a.m. Monday morning. And for the standing committees meeting, please call before twelve thirty p.m. Monday afternoon. You may also send comments to city clerk's office at Pittsburgh PA dot gov. I believe there were only eight of us today or did all nine join?
All nine joined.
All nine joined. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
The mood.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.